Good evening, it is October 9th, 2012. This is the North Kingstown School Committee. Tonight is a work session and we've just announced the Teacher of the Year and the Educational Support Professional of the Year. I'm going to let Dr. O'Jay talk more about that, but before we begin, let's all rise to say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, if you could call the roll call, please. Linda Avanzato.
Here.
Melvois Benson.
John Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
William Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Richard Welsh.
Julia Howells.
Here.
Thank you. Lorraine, if you could go over the calendars also, please. October 18th, Facility Subcommittee Meeting, 4:30 PM, Central Administration Building. October 23rd, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School Auditorium. October 24th, Wellness Committee Meeting, 3:30 PM, Central Administration Building. November 5th, CLAC Meeting, 6:00 PM, Central Administration Building. November 6th, Election Day, No School for Students, Professional Development Day for Teachers. November 12th, Veterans Day, All Schools and Offices Closed. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. O'Jay, do you have anything on your presentations and recognitions?
Sure, I just want to make an announcement that if you are at home tuning in, that we actually filmed the ceremony that we just had with our Teacher of the Year, Toni Annette Silveira, and our ESP, Educational Support Professional of the Year, Liz Tully. And sometimes we would do that and then do another little ceremony at the beginning of the meeting. We decided just to do it separately and to have it filmed. So if you happen to miss it and you'd like to see that, it has its own separate heading on our website to go to the same place that you would normally go to to see, you know, our school committee meetings on video. So I just wanted to make that announcement and congratulations one more time to both of them.
Thank you. Do you have anything more for your superintendent's report?
No, I don't.
All right, that brings us into the consent agenda. Is there anything to be exempted from the consent agenda? Mr. Mudge?
Yes, we need minutes approval, item one.
All right, I'll take a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the remainder of the consent agenda passes, Mr. Mudge, item number A1.
Purpose of this meeting agenda revision, this is a public meeting, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yes.
And at that meeting, we haven't really shown here, I don't know if the public's seen it or not, what the meeting agenda has been changed to. I don't know if anyone's seen it at all.
Are you talking about A1?
The, yes, the corrections.
Okay.
Those who find them here. With respect to the corrections, it appears that there was a motion made at some time during the meeting, opened the meeting, and that motion was made after the roll call. Is that what I read this, is that what this states?
I believe so. Lorraine, could you answer that question?
Yes, it was the first motion to open the meeting that was omitted in error.
If that's the case, even following today's order of business, it seems to me the minutes had already been opened prior to that. The call of order, which says, School Committee Page, at 8:30 PM, called the meeting order. So why do we have to call it the order again or open it again? We'd already taken the roll call.
That's just how it occurred, but that is the motion that was omitted.
Well, I just, okay, so what you are saying is that we opened the meeting at 8:30, we then took the roll call, and then we opened the meeting again. So make sure that's correct. That was the sequence.
No, I think it was like this meeting, where we opened the meeting, we have the roll call, and then...
In order to go into an emergency, to have an emergency meeting, the school committee has to approve having an emergency meeting. The purpose of the motion was to approve having an emergency meeting.
That's already, that was already done.
It was, in the minutes, we had, it was done as part of the meeting, but it was left out of the minutes.
That's not correct at all. It wasn't done as part of the meeting.
It absolutely wasn't, Mr. Mudge. You were not there, how do you know that?
I certainly do, because I do know that you called a roll call vote earlier in the day, okay?
There was no roll call earlier in the day.
At 7:30, you didn't call?
At 7:30, it was determined that there was a need for an emergency meeting, and the Secretary to the School Committee contacted every member of the school committee to see if they were available to come to the meeting. But in order to actually have an emergency meeting, there has to be a motion by the school committee to have the emergency meeting. The only way we can have a motion to have an emergency meeting is to get everybody together and have them vote on having an emergency meeting.
Okay, so...
That motion was part of the meeting, it was done, but then when we reviewed Lorraine's notes, we realized that it had been left off the original minutes. So in order to be corrective going forward, so if 10 years from now, anyone looks at these minutes, they'll see that we did have that motion to have an emergency meeting.
So with respect to that, then, the call that was made earlier in the evening was a call to...
Mr. Cerisi, what is your point of order?
Madam Chair, this is, this information has been available to us since Thursday, and Mr. Mudge has had ample time and opportunity to call or go in and ask any questions or raise any concerns that he may have. Instead, as usual, he's chosen to do it tonight in a conspiracy theory, I got your moment. So I'd like to move the meeting along and make a motion that will end the debate and call the question.
And that's what we do all the time. Let's not talk about it, right? That's your commot of operandi, say something's wrong, and then you go ahead and do that.
We don't have a motion on the table yet.
No, I have a motion to approve these minutes.
I'd like to finish my comments, please, okay?
You'll be able to finish your comments. There is a motion on the table to approve the minutes. And now there's a second, Mr. Mudge, and then Mrs. Avanzato.
Again, again, there's some inconsistencies here, obviously, because when the minutes, see, I'm trying to reconcile what really happened here.
Okay, Mr. Mudge, then ask a question, since you weren't there, you can ask a question about what happened.
Well, what I want to know is, why are these minutes, these, meeting of these minutes? Wasn't it identified that a roll, a poll was called? A poll was called to hold the meeting?
Because we don't need to have a poll in the minutes that was making sure that people were available.
And you don't have to record that?
No.
Okay, so that's what I'll make sure. So you polled a school committee meeting, polled every members, you got a vote, but you don't have to record that anywhere.
No, there was no vote. Every member of the school committee was called.
Excuse me.
And asked to come to a meeting. Mr. Mudge, you were called also, I think you were called twice.
It was asked, or three times, in fact. But the point is, we were called, okay, to attend the meeting. Period. We were never called, we were never called to convene a meeting.
You were called to see your availability, to come to a meeting that was called on an emergency basis.
Who called the meeting, by the way?
And, Mr. Mudge, you have the answers to all of these questions, because you filed a complaint, we answered the complaint, and today you sent back about a 15-page response to our answer. So you have the answers to the questions that you are now asking this committee. I suggest if you want to know what happened, that you read the response that we submitted to the Attorney Generals on behalf of this school committee.
That's not absolutely different.
Mrs. Avanzato.
I would also like to say that this doesn't comport with what happened, because the minutes of the meeting reflect here, okay, is different than everything else, because you in here do not say that you had a threat, and that was the reason the meeting was called. Now, how come that happened? You said, quote, "There was a, there was a known threat," and that was the reason you had to call the emergency meeting. Now, you cannot think like that, yes.
Mr. Mudge, I'm going to recognize Mr. Cerisi, or actually Mrs. Avanzato, and then Mr. Cerisi.
Madam Chair, I have a motion to end the debate and call the question, please.
Yeah, Larry, you do it all the time. Don't get to the truth of anything.
Do I have a second?
Don't get to the truth, and you do that all the time, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. That's dishonest.
Do I have a second?
Don't tell the public what's going on, Mr. Cerisi. Just hide it, all right?
Mrs. Avanzato.
My comment is that if, no, I am going to make a comment. If Mr. Mudge has a question or a statement, he needs to make it calmly and civilly at the table, instead of this grandstanding dialogue like a suspense, excuse me, I'm making my comments.
But I keep getting butted in on all the time, okay? Yeah.
No one's trying to silence you, you just need to say it appropriately.
I have a motion on the floor.
According to the meeting, can I finish speaking?
John, you laugh, you know?
According to the...
They're reading rules.
Period, that's it. I can't even get the words out, never mind, keep going, whatever.
We don't have a second, yeah, I don't...
Ma'am, in the, that light that...
Time out.
Ma'am, you're shining that light in our eyes, you're more than welcome to record the meeting, either audio or video, but I don't know if you realize you're doing it or not, whether it's intentional or not, but that light is shining right into our eyes. Could you please turn it off? Second row, third one from the right, you're looking right at me. Thank you. So you're holding it down underneath the, thank you.
Yeah, you, yeah, right there, that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't know if you realize you were doing it or not, I thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right, so we have a motion to end debate and call the question, I don't have a second. Second, all right. Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote? Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Okay. And this, this is the vote on to approve the correction to the minutes of August 27th. John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Motion passes, four to one, thank you. All right, that brings us up to our policies for tonight. Our first policy that we have is an administrative organization chart. I did have Dr. Humbert express some, some issues before this meeting, and actually before her, we had discussed some issues with this chart in the policy meeting, and so this isn't a policy that we need to have two reads on, but I would suggest we take two reads on it, just because I know that there are some people who have said that there may need to be some changes. So the, is there any questions right now with how the chart is laid out, since I would say we don't take a vote on the chart, this is for policy, CCA, Administrative Organizations? The policy won't be changed at all, it's just the chart that is attached.
Yeah, I understand, please.
Mr. Mudge, what are your questions?
I'll wait, does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Biscardin.
What changes were made? How do I, I see the, the org chart, there's the attachment, but I don't, it would be nice to know what, how this differs from the original.
One of the, in the, in the old chart, that's the black and white one, you'll see that, you know, the, the chart does, tells two different things. It talks about, you know, the hierarchy within the organization, if you will, but it also talks about, you know, who evaluates whom. And in the old chart, it looks like the superintendent, the assistant superintendent is evaluating just about everybody in the district. And in the new chart, it looks like the assistant superintendent isn't evaluating anybody at all, and that's not going to stand, I'll tell you that right now. So neither one really reflect what, you know, after looking at this a little bit more, what we would need. I see the point in, in both of these, but I think I'd like to take another stab at this, just to kind of get that piece of it correct. There are a couple of other places, for instance, we, we have moved the technology piece, that's probably the biggest move, over to the Director of Administration. While technology still answers to the assistant superintendent for, you know, its curriculum functionality and all that, you know, a lot of the, the business end of technology really needs to reside with the Director of Administration, so we feel it more appropriately falls in that area. With, with the, you know, even with this old chart, the superintendent would be directly responsible, for instance, for evaluating all of the principles, but it doesn't look that way on the old chart. It looks like the assistant superintendent would do that. On the new chart, it, it looks a little bit more apparent that way, but it kind of takes the assistant superintendent almost completely out of that equation altogether, and so that's, that's what we're trying to reconcile, that the assistant superintendent has a big role in that, but not to the point where the superintendent doesn't have any. So that, that's a piece of it that we're looking at. The other big changes I mentioned, Mr. Biscardin, is mostly with technology, and moving that from residing with the assistant superintendent to the Director of Administration.
Yeah, I see that now. I wasn't aware that they, these two charts were, was it before and after, sorry?
Any other questions? Mr. Mudge?
Who's the athletic director appoint, Richard, report doing this, John?
The athletic director works at the high school, for the high school athletic director, and he would report to the principal of the high school. There are two part-time athletic directors at each of the middle schools, and they, they report to their principals as well.
Are you going to show those on the chart?
It's, we can. I would, I would suggest that it's included under teachers, but, I mean, it could be put there, it's one half, doesn't matter the other, it doesn't...
Isn't this really a functional organizational chart as well? For all administrative staff?
Yes, there is, there is kind of a functional organizational piece to this, but there's also an evaluative piece to this, you know, who evaluates whom, and sometimes that doesn't necessarily go hand in hand, and that's what we're trying to reconcile in some of these spots. But, you know, in that case, if we, if we did put the athletic director under, you know, the principals, that, that would be fine, wouldn't make much of a difference, whether you include it under teachers or not.
Well, my, my issue is, is it's a function that has a responsibility, and it's kind of a supervisory function as well, and the chart should, I believe what you're saying here is, this chart shows the, the supervisory functions of the school department.
Although all of our athletic, our part-time athletic director and our assistants are all teachers, so they still go according to the chart, that the, the teachers are all under the principals.
But I understand, but you do have a functional respons, but let's say we, our new athletic director didn't report or wasn't a teacher, where would he show up on here? It's a functional responsibility as well, that's all I'm saying is, and what I would also like to see on the chart is, okay, is how many people below these people, okay, for example, in maintenance, how many people are on the maintenance staff? You have supervisors in the maintenance staff as well, right? And then, I would think, I'd like to see the whole organization, so that we can have on one view graph, if you may, the number of people and where they, you know, where they functionally show up, and the number of staffing that we have there. For example, a Director of Administrative Services, you know, may be responsible for, you know, 100 people, and a Director of Pupil Personnel Services may be 13 or 14 people. So it'd be nice to see, okay, what the, the authority is from a supervision responsibility, and how many people they do have under that responsibility. I would also like to note that I noticed we have the Assistant Superintendent for Title I responsible for COZI program. Is that new? That appears to be new as well, and I would ask...
No, that's not new.
What about all of the other title grant programs? Who are responsible, for example, for Title II or Title IV?
Yeah, that's something that we, we talked about, and again, you know, that, we have, you know, Title III and, and Title, which is ESL, and Title II, which is Professional Development, and those are programs, and there are functions in there, but they're not necessarily staff. See what I mean? So we, we were throwing that back and forth as well, there are some responsibilities that you oversee, but not necess, like Title III isn't a group of staff, they are ESL teachers who, like any other teachers in a building, report to their principal.
Yeah, but I, I, I would add, Dr. O'Jay, is that, that program, do you have a program manager? Don't we reach one of those programs by law, don't we have somebody that's responsible for those programs, from a federal government standpoint?
I don't think we tried to capture every, every job within the district. This is, this is more of the administrative, large overseeing jobs, and yes, we then have the function that goes below people, but we don't want every single job that is in here.
And in this case, Bill, Title I, Title I does have a program manager, but Title II and Title III do not. So, you know, that's why that is listed that way. Title I is more closely aligned with actual people who manage that, where Title II and Title III are managed by the assistant superintendent.
Well, again, it represents a good chunk of money, you know, we talk in four, five million dollars, you know, as things swing back and forth, you know, over the years, obviously, the federal government, that, this is the federal government entitlement grants we're talking about.
No, I don't disagree with you on that, I, it's just a matter of, you know, this chart is, is supposed to be reflecting, you know, if you're, you know, wherever you are in the district, you understand who you answer to, you know, you understand who is your direct supervisor, that's, that's one of the goals of this chart.
All right, I guess that's why I asked the question about the other titles, titles and programs.
All right, are there any more questions on this? We're not voting on this, this week, as I said initially, so what I would say is that when the next chart comes out, if there are issues that you have prior to the school committee meeting, please bring those forward, so that we can make sure that, that we discuss that, so we know where we are in terms, discuss it with the superintendent, please, so that we can have this ready for our future school committee meeting. All right, that does bring us to JICH, our Drug and Alcohol Use Policy, and this one has been amended, the Working Together for Wellness Group had come forward to me a number of months ago and asked for some policy revisions. Sorry, I accidentally did not pull that up, okay. And it was, started to be difficult for me to show the revisions, so I will, and have you have a readable document. They've changed some things around in the policy statement, the purpose statement is essentially the same, they've just moved some things around. One of the things that this policy reads a little better than it did before, because when we initially adopted the chemical health policy, we brought a policy that only had to do with somebody who had drugs or alcohol in school, and the chemical health policy dealt with things outside of school. And so this policy now integrates the wording of those two that kind of pushed together a little better than it did before. But the intent of the policy is the same, the intervention is the same, the self-referral is the same, the policy expectations are the same, we do make sure that we distinguish between the discipline and the consequences are for students who are outside of school versus if a student has drugs or alcohol in school, that is a different policy for the consequences, because that can result in suspension. And so therefore, some of this may apply, but the suspension would be the thing that would actually be overreaching if you had drugs or alcohol here at school. And so this, the consequences that are in here, I stated more deal with if this is outside of the school grounds. But other than that, like I said, it lays things out a little bit more cleanly than they were before, so that when they have the nights for the athletes who come, and also the student activities when they come, that they can give this to them and they understand what the policy is all about. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to recognize the work that's going into this policy over the last several years from various groups, including yourself, and Working Together for Wellness Committee, as well as the, I'm thinking of the name of...
Laura Hosley?
Yes.
Or Task Force?
Task Force, yes, thank you. So I know this is something that we've worked on for several years, and we continue to revise and update, so, and a lot of people come together and put a lot of good work into this, so just wanted to recognize them, and I will make a motion to approve the amendments as you have outlined.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Mudge?
Are all these amendments now codified in here?
They are, yes.
I just said, when I had read this originally, I questioned the applicability, and I, I'll be honest, I didn't look at this that thoroughly here, but does this policy include, let's say that the kids are in, in the summer, they're out of school, has nothing to do with school, and some kid gets in trouble for whatever, does this policy cover that?
Yes, it states in this policy, this is year-round.
Excuse me?
The policy states it is year-round.
Year-round, so if a, if a kid, the reason I'm really nupped is, I'm wondering about the legality of some of these things, or this one in particular. If somebody, let's say was on vacation and went to California, and the kid got in trouble or something else, this would be applicable? Even though it didn't occur, you know, in town or in the state, that it'd be sanctioned because of that, this policy?
Only if we knew about it, but yes, it is, it is, follows, this follows the Barrington model, Middletown, Portsmouth, I don't remember, those are just a few of the policies that were being...
That was my question.
You know, told me about the other day of other schools in the state who have adopted similar policies.
I think that was my question, has, has this taken, you know, been screened from a legal standpoint, see if it gets enforceable?
Well, yes, I mean, that's what I'm trying to tell you, is that we're not the only school who has, who has adopted this and who has vetted this. It's not new.
But it has, it has, it has then been legally screened, and so we're comfortable that it's enforceable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Avanzato.
I was just going to mention that this was discussed, this concept was discussed pretty thoroughly, and I'm not sure if Mr. Mudge was on the committee. At the time we first started the conversation with the alcohol, the first time we drafted the alcohol policy, when we had the speaker come to the high school and speak to the students, we had a lot of parents voice similar concerns about enforcement. However, these policies are being passed pretty much all over the country, and they're, they've been tested, and I think they've, they've been upheld for the most part.
Yeah, I can add that I went to a seminar three years ago, when we had the prior Attorney General, Patrick Lynch, who spoke on this policy and how he saw this as a good thing in coming to the high schools within the state, and that was a conference that also John Underwood was at, and Laura Hosley was the one who recommended that I go to it, so that I understood what was going on, what was being done, so...
Yeah, my question was, was this an overreach of our authority, basically?
No.
So, okay, that's, you said that in passing.
Although I will say, there are people who have that mindset, Mr. Mudge, so it all depends on who you talk to.
But you said legally, it's, it holds water.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second to approve JICH. Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote, please? Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
All right, the next policy we have on here is the immunization policy. And this was updated by our, we have our head school nurse, Linda Chudowski. My apologies to Linda for always having to think about how to pronounce her last name. And also Elise, Dr. Elise Klein, who is the, our district employee's a doctor for, for her services. And both of them, I had review all of our medical policies. And they got back to me just within the last two weeks. So the next three, the immunization, the HIV, and the emergency are all policies that we need to have updated. The biggest change in the immunization policy was that we have the wording be similar to, well, not similar, it is exactly like state law. And so that was what Dr. Klein suggested, is that we change what we had and we bring it to... She said, if anything, our policy is a little bit... She, she said, this, this basically would make sure that we stated exactly what the law stated. And so that was what her recommendation was in the, in immunizations. I'll talk about all three of them. In the HIV infection, the only real change there are some spelling changes, and normally we don't have approval of, of just spelling changes. But the policy was last approved in 2003. And I thought for future school committees, it would just be good to make sure that we showed that we had reviewed the policy in 2012 and that it passed what our doctor said was good. So normally I don't do that with policies, is merely to put on a different date. But I think because this is an HIV policy, that I thought it would be better to make sure the spelling was right and to have a newer date, just to show that we had reviewed it. And then our emergency, what we called the standing orders, the JLCE, are updated every year just to keep current with what, what medical practices are. And so the changes that are made there within, I think you can pretty much see. And again, those were all changes that our, our doctor for the district and our head nurse suggested. And so I pretty much go on exactly what they suggest. Any other questions? Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to the existing policy as outlined.
Second. So that's the three medical ones that we have there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote?
William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of what we needed to do here tonight. That brings us to citizens' comments. I'll remind everyone that this is citizens' comments time, and so this is the time for folks to come forward to the microphone. You may discuss, it does not have to be a discussion of what has been on the agenda. It can be on any topic you wish. I do have the, the time clock when we asked it all. Comments be restricted to three minutes. And this is a time for citizens to come and address the school committee, not for an exchange. So first person I have on here is Sandy Blankenship.
Sandra Blankenship, 103 Dodge Street, North Kingstown. My message is, never forget. Your decision to privatize our custodial services devastated these families economically and emotionally.
Yeah, I changed that word.
Mike Ballamucci. Margaret Call. Antonio Costa. Sandra Tyler. Tony De Gregory. Jason Dyer. Jackie Fagan. Justin Romano. Ryan Jennings.
Stephen Jones. Robert Smith.
James Morris. James Todd. James Nelson. Mark Dawson. Peter Ladd. Ron Monates. Thomas Keen. Robert Kirk.
Brian Fry.
Robin Lasgoggins.
Thank you very much. We have, I have no other people on the sign-up sheet for citizens' comments. Is there anyone else who, who's coming forward to speak?
Robert Russo. Roger Pearson. Pedro Riviera.
You have somebody else coming to the mic, so don't turn it off yet.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Abadijian wanted to speak. We got any current affairs class? Oh, you had some students from current affairs that wanted to speak this evening?
I had some students, but they were, they were asking me some questions. Then I went interrupt while you were talking about the JICH policy. That was kind of news to them, news to me. And they were asking me questions back there about how if they're in the middle of the summer of that, let's say, house party, they can be held accountable at school this very month of July. And I didn't have an answer for it. I hope it's someone be able to.
Kim's our policy guru, so I'm going to pass the buck right to her on that one.
One more point that I was picking up when I came walking in. It's kind of tied into, you know, something that they just addressed. Prior to privatizing janitors, yeah, I worked closely with Mr. Romano and a few other janitors to make sure this building recycles. Matter of fact, Mr. Kahoon bought every classroom, a recycling bin. And since there's been a change in the way this building's run in janitorial services, we're walking the cafeteria right now, you can walk out the senior row, and you can ask the students, there isn't one single recycling bin there. And you, you know that every single town pays $25 a ton to recycle. So when you throw those recyclables away, it costs the town money, which it turns out costs the union money.
It's good you mentioned. We can work on that.
And then you can also look upstairs around the classroom. I know, because I generate a lot of recyclables with the newspaper. We used to go through probably half a dozen bins and everything blew up, those big toders. And now me, you have one a week. And from what I gather, the theaters, you just don't have the time right now for businesses or institutions to actually recycle. It's all going to the same place now in the Delta.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I just asked that maybe Dr. Roger could talk to a business director and see what's, what's happening with that. So hopefully get it back in place.
Something I was aware of. I'll check into it.
Thank you very much.
I used to work with Mr. Draper. I haven't been able to do personally, I'll say to talk to him about it. But yeah, if someone could explain to the JICH thing to him, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
I'd be happy to do that, you know, not necessarily right now, but I'd be happy to come to one of your classes and... Okay.
That sign up for that, too.
That'd be great.
All right, well, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll reconvene into open session after our executive session.
And you're going into executive session pursuant to 42464 regarding employee job performance pursuant to 42465A1, and that person has been duly notified.
Thank you.
Thank you for that addition.